I would like to call the school board's annual organization meeting to order. Board members, please state your name and election district. I'll start with Ms. Healy.
Patricia Healy, Rock Hill District.
Susan Randall, George Washington District.
Irene Hollerback, Acquahia.
Holly Hazard, Hartwood.
Pamela Young, Garrisonville.
Elizabeth Warner, Griffiths, Whitewater.
Sarah Chase, Falmouth.
At this time, I ask for nominations for the Chair of the School Board. As you know, a second is not required.
Move to nominate Holly Hazard.
Second, oh, sorry. Didn't listen.
Do you need a second?
He said we're not required.
Okay. Not hearing any other names. Okay. Those in favor of Ms. Holly Hazard as Chairperson, please say aye.
Aye.
Or any opposed? Congratulations.
Everything else, okay. All right, thank you. At this time, I ask for nominations for Vice Chair of the School Board. As you know, a second is not required.
Move to nominate Susan Randall.
All right. Let's try it again. Wait till I finish, and then let's see if it just, I want to be. At this time, I ask for nominations for Vice Chair of the School Board. As you know, a second is not required.
I nominate Pamela Young.
All right, is there any other nominations?
I nominate Susan Randall.
All right. So we will vote in, in order, all right? Hold on, let me make sure I've got my script. Sorry, I just want to make sure. All right. Those in favor of Ms. Pamela Young as Vice Chair, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Ms. Hall, will you poll the board, please?
Dr. Chase?
Aye.
Ms. Hazard?
No.
Ms. Healy?
No.
Ms. Hollerback? No.
Ms. Randall?
No.
Dr. Warner?
Aye.
And Ms. Young?
Aye. All right. The second motion is for those in favor of Ms. Susan Randall as Vice Chair. Please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Aye. All right. Ms. Hall, will you poll the board, please?
Dr. Chase?
Aye.
Ms. Hazard?
Aye.
Ms. Healy? Ms. Hollerback?
Yes.
Ms. Randall?
Yes.
Dr. Warner?
Yes.
Before I say why I am not voting for Ms. Randall is not because I don't like her. You know, we had a walk together and talked about the position. I did not know that she was running for the position until she said somebody wanted her to run for it. So, but I wanted the position. And the reason why I was casting a vote for myself is because I want to say that, for example, the summer after I got out on the school board, there was a white supremacist rally in Virginia and Charlottesville. Last year, we saw the murder of George Floyd. My fellow board members reached out to me to offer support and to try and get a better understanding of what blacks and minorities go through. Last summer, we signed a resolution affirming our commitment to a more inclusive environment for all in Stafford County Public School. Last week, we had an attack on our democracy with riots in our Capitol. So if you still felt the same way as you did last year, I was going to ask for your vote as Vice Chair. I am qualified as any other member on this board. And implicit bias is when people can't see past the color of a black person's skin. I work as hard as every other member on this board. I have not missed a single meeting in three years. I was the Chair of the Finance and Budget Committee last year. I regularly visit the schools. As you know, I speak a number of different languages. When Moncur opened, I acted, I acted as a translator for many of the Latinx families coming to register their children. This past spring and summer, I volunteered to hand out meals to families because I worry and care so much about the minority children in my community, and I knew my ability to speak multiple languages would help. As a board, I thought we would show the community and the school system that they can look at our leadership board and see that it represents the community they serve, and not that the same people or the same type of race would serve the leadership community for the past eight years. Thank you.
Thank you. Will you cast your vote, Ms. Young? Will you cast your vote? You said before you were going to cast, before you cast your vote, you wanted to make your statement. I want to make sure, just for the record.
Yeah, before I cast mine for myself, which I already did.
Okay, so this will be.
Cast the vote for Susan. I already had said no.
Okay. All right, so it was no. Okay, thank you. All right. Motion carries for Ms. Randall as Vice Chair. Congratulations. Our next meet, our next part of the meeting is to appoint our amazing school clerk and deputy school clerk. So the superintendent has recommended Melissa Hall as clerk of the board and Angela Mergo as deputy clerk. Do I have a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation?
Motion to approve the recommendation from the superintendent.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No way. We are very happy to have our Ms. Hall and Ms. Mergo. So then moving on to our next piece is to have the approval of our agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Then a motion to approve and a second. Any modifications, additions, or edits? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, our next part of organizational business is going to be the adoption of the 2021 School Board Meeting schedule. I don't know if everyone has that either in front of them. So before we entertain a motion, I just wanted to talk through a few of the things on this particular budget, or, excuse me, it does include the budget, but to look at the calendar. Just wanted to point out, our regular board meeting in March is on the second. The reason that I moved that to the second is because on the 23rd, we would be approving our budget request. As we all know, and Mr. Fulmer is here as well, usually after we approve, we are not the next day ready to take it over to our funding body, which we are scheduled to do on the 9th. Therefore, we talked among the staff and ourselves of saying that moving the regular board meeting to the second made more sense because otherwise, on the 9th, we would meet with the Board of Supervisors at maybe 3:00. That tends to be the meeting we get invited to, have a joint meeting, and then rush over for our school board meeting. It just seemed that that was going to be a pretty packed day, and we may have needed the preparation time on the second. So I'm just giving sort of some of the theory. We can certainly move it. Then our March 23rd meeting will be after spring break because spring break is that week of the 15th. Let's see. On May 11, 25, and June 8th, we're going to try and have our advisory committees present at some part of that meeting so we can get those recommendations. And then we were saying that on our June, well, let me get to the June 29th meeting, but that we would have a specialized work session to deal with those recommendations before we went on either summer break or that they, we would forget them and not be able to address them before we started the school year.
Holly, what day is graduation?
Let's see, I think it's like the 12th. Wait a minute, I don't have, I'd have to pull up my phone to look up my calendar.
Dr. Kizner, do you know a hand?
Missy.
Tom? Second, second Saturday in June.
Right, it's either like the 12th, something like, 12th? Ooh, better memory.
Madam Chair. Thank you.
Give me just one second, and then, and then we'll, then in, on the June 8th meeting, that would be our regular second meeting in June. The reason that we would have such a break until June 29th was to allow our financial staff to be ready for year-end appropriation. We always have things. June 22nd seemed a little bit potentially early, and so we went ahead and added there our superintendent and board sort of work session at that time of year, sort of a wrap-up to the school year at that time seemed to make sense. And then we would meet on the 29th as a regular board meeting. In July, we try, are trying to have only one meeting near the end of July to allow staff and everybody some time to enjoy their families and with July 4th in there. Then the regular, then after that, there are just the regular board meetings. Of course, we can add and subtract from this, but this was, I wanted to give you sort of an idea. This is not set in stone. No? So anyway, those were just some suggestions for the, Ms. Young, I think, had a question first.
Yeah, it's just a comment or observation, really. So before we accept the calendar, can we confirm how the public hearing for February the 9th at 7:00, you know, it's a regular board meeting, so it says that it includes a public hearing for FY22 funding request, and then it has that star, star. So I don't know what it's going to look like, and it says the star, star is for inclement weather. And we know we're in COVID right now. I don't know if we should have another star, star, star. And then depending on the COVID circumstance, how we plan on conducting the public hearing.
I know by law, we have to have a public hearing, I believe. Is that correct, Mr. Fulmer? So we have to show it, and that's why we put the inclement? Maybe that is something we can talk more with our staff on how we can get public comments that night and how, I, at that point, these, Dr. Kizner, I believe are those county meeting, county buildings are still closed, so perhaps we may not be meeting here.
I think they're back open at that point.
February, February 9th.
Right now, they're opening on February 5th, but that's of course subject to change.
So it could be here, or we might pick a school to be able to do that and come up with a way. But I appreciate that we can begin to sort of start thinking that through. I'm looking at Mr. Cook, who's probably trying to not look at me. I'm just making sure that we can have some type of public comment, especially that evening because it's required.
And if you wanted to put something at the bottom instead of, it just says inclement, whether something COVID circumstance, location is TBD or something like that. Just a thought.
Excellent. Yes, Dr. Chase?
So I had a couple. One was the May 11th, the 25th, and the 8th, when we have advisory committee recommendations. I wonder if we want to start the meeting at 6:00 or 6:30 instead of 7:00 because, and make a concerted effort to not add additional presentations on those three days because the meetings can go very, very long if, if that's the case. And then, you know, I, I guess I'm wondering what's going on with the superintendent's evaluation. Is that going to be the evaluation that we met with in the fall, and then we're going to finish it in June? Or just what's going on there? Because there is no written evaluation posted to board docs currently for this past year. And I have seen nothing in writing yet.
Usually, any evaluations will not be posted on board docs, none in the past?
It's in the confidential section, they are posted.
Okay. This was actually to do sort of a year-end, getting us back on track, what I would call for having a evaluation at the June time period. It seemed like a great time to sort of talk about the school year. So this would be forward-thinking to that one. But I can make sure that the notes that I used for talking to Dr. Kizner can be posted because mine are handwritten, so I will make sure those are.
And I would just ask, though, that, that perhaps moving forward, that those notes are circulated to the board before the Chair meets with the superintendent to make sure that board members don't have any questions about those notes and agree that they represent what happened in the meeting.
Sure. Unfortunately, the two times that we did schedule those meetings, there was members unable to attend, and I felt very uncomfortable doing a Zoom meeting for, an evaluation. So yes, I will get those circulated then. So would we like to say like the May 11, 25th, and June 8th, maybe a 6:30 start? Or 6? 6 is fine with me, but I don't know about the rest of the board.
I would prefer 6:00, especially if these go long. Even if some of us are a few minutes late, I don't know that that would be an issue.
I, I think 6.
All right. Let's go ahead and put that on there because I know we did that one time. We had the committees meet, present before, so we can do that.
Madam Chair, and we one time did that and had the committees present first, and there was a feeling on some of the committees that we were shortchanging them because we did not have them in the prime time spot. So I suggest that we have the meeting beginning at 6:00, but that we not start the committee presentations until 7:00. That way, they're not put on earlier.
Yeah, and that's what I was sort of suggesting too, because I remember that as well, Ms. Healy.
Did we already establish with the committees during their orientation limitations on how long their presentations can be? Because some of them go really, really long.
My committees have no, have not been told. And also, is there a, now, well, when will they be told which one of these dates is their slot?
They usually sign up, is how, Ms. Ms. Hall has a really nice letter that goes to them every year that gives them the ability to choose. And also, if they are ready to present. Because last year, the committees did not feel, this is to give an opportunity in case everybody wants to present. We, I have no idea when we get to that time. It will be up to them. But once we sort of, once we approve this, Ms. Hall can send out the letter to the committee chairs and find out what their preference is. But go ahead.
I was waiting for you to set the calendar, and tomorrow is going to be an afternoon.
Madam, Madam Chair, just before we do that, can we set a time limit on their presentation so that it can be included in the letter?
I believe it's in there as 10 minutes, Ms. Hall, if I remember, 10 or 15 minutes, but.
Mm-hmm.
That was very diplomatic, Ms. Hall.
I can tell you, we ignored that.
Ms. Healy?
I, I suggest that we make it 15 with a maximum of 20 and, and make it clear that that will be timed because we have other, you know, ones scheduled. I think that's, if we, if we give twice as much as, you know, we have in the past, hopefully we'll have some, you know, adherence, and it will make them be able to better plan, you know, what to present and what to, you know, present in terms of documents for, you know, for further review. And I have, when you get back to the calendar, I have a question.
Sure. Anybody else on the advisory committee, and then I'll, I'll jump there, but any other advisory committee comments? Beginning the meeting that night at 6:00 and then having them present during the main part of the meeting, not right at the beginning, a little later towards the 7:00 or what we can best ascertain to be around 7:00. All right, Ms. Healy, other comment?
I, I just have a question about the, the one month between June 29th and July 27th. With schools starting in early August and appointments having to be made before then for people to come in for the orientations and getting ready, I think we may want to think about having that meeting prior to the 27th in July. Otherwise, we'll probably have to have an emergency meeting, you know, to, to make appointments. And if we, if we do want to keep it to, you know, one meeting, because traditionally, didn't we have under our policy, July and August, we'd have one meeting? So we, we need to relook at that policy as well. We, I don't think we need to do that to approve this meeting. But if we're going to be changing this, then we should also put some more flexibility in our policy.
And I just, you know, to have three meetings in June and then two meetings in July and two meetings in August, we are not giving ourselves any real break during the summer.
What if we just moved the July meeting up one week to the 20th or 21st, whatever that is?
Let's, let's ask Dr. Kizner because he kind of discussed whether, what the best need, and also, I know his concern too about making sure that staff had some kind of break this summer.
So this, this past summer, many of our 12-month employees were unable to take vacation days. Matter of fact, many of them are going to be losing their vacation days because they've reached the ceiling. So what I was trying to do is give a timeframe that would not, would not limit our employees to take the vacation that they absolutely deserve to take. So that's why I asked Ms. Hazard to move it towards the end of July because we were basically limiting just four weeks for people to schedule their vacations.
So I mean, I guess we, what we can do, now that COVID has taught us that we can virtually meet, that should there be a personnel emergency, that we could do that. I would suggest keeping it on the 27th, just in light, but.
But Madam Chair, and that defeats the purpose for, for the board. If we, if we really do want to have one month of the year, well, of the summer, that we have one meeting, I would think that we could schedule our agenda so that we would not require staff to be present. I mean, is there, is, is that a necessity on, on some of these things? I, I just don't know. We don't need to have presentations at every meeting. We don't, you know, need a lot of this. And if it's, if it's required, then we'd have to have anyway. I mean, it's fine with me if we want to leave it that last day, but I really prefer not to be in the position where we call an emergency meeting because we have to make appointments when we know ahead of time we're probably going to have to do it anyway. I mean, here it is six months ahead, but I can't remember any time that, you know, school didn't start where we had, you know, a month in between that we didn't have to, to meet to make appointments. So I don't, I don't want to, I certainly don't want to inconvenience the staff, but this is a board meeting, and we should be able to conduct our business without, you know, requiring the presidents of staff, at least for one meeting of the year.
I, I am open to whichever. I, I think it should, I do believe it should be one meeting, but I do think it should be fairly limited on staff support.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just a, a comment. If you need anything, when you schedule the agenda and you set it up, you could look and see if there are anything that you need, even from the staff, and make sure you get that in advance, and then they won't need to be here. Just a thought.
Also, the meeting, the last meeting in June is the 29th, which is fairly, oh, which is fairly late in the schedule. So I would think that most appointments might be completed by then. And if anything else comes up, then we could, we could still hold off until the 27th, even though it is, I agree with Ms. Healy, off or close to the start of school year.
Well, let's just hope for the best. Unfortunately, there's so many positions that don't get filled even a month before school starts. It's, it's that last rush to fill the positions that we are able to recruit some people and, and bring them in. But I, you know, let's leave it and hopefully that we won't have any emergency meetings.
Dr. Kizner, I mean, I, I want you to be comfortable with.
One, one thing the school board demonstrated, if we have to have meetings over the summer, we could call them pretty quickly. Last summer, we had many meetings. So, so again, if you want to move it, that's fine. If the, if the purpose is for appointing staff, that's different than asking people to prepare presentations. Does new staff come back that last week? The week that we have our board meeting? So it seemed like a good transition time to start the regular board meetings.
Would, would it make sense to have the first meeting in August be the 3rd rather than the 10th, and then have the next meeting go back to the 24th? If, if it's appointing staff, that's just.
Appointing staff is different than us offering a contract. Okay, they know it's continued upon your final approval, but we all, every school system offers people a position, knowing that the school board has to approve it, but that doesn't slow us down for offering positions.
Can they actually start work before the school board approves the appointment? Just curious.
Can they start work before?
Yeah, they could start work. Yeah.
But then if we didn't approve it, then they wouldn't get paid? Is that what would happen? I mean, just.
They wouldn't have a contract.
If, if we, if we waited in between, especially the summer, that's unrealistic. So there are positions that we hire, and they recognize as contingent upon school board approval. But those positions, bus drivers, other positions, we're not going to wait. It doesn't happen often, but it does happen. And what, and the other thing is people get multiple offers. You know, they get offered from here, they get offered from Spotsylvania, Prince William County. We, we need to offer them a position.
Go ahead, Ms. Young.
Madam Chair, for authorizing that, do you need the full board? Or is that something that?
Yeah, my only question was the emergency meetings. I, I can't remember years when we have not had emergency meetings to make appointments. I wasn't aware that they could start work if they didn't have a contract that was, you know, ratified. So if, if that's the case, and that takes away my concern about having to meet in, on an emergency meeting to approve appointments. So things have changed over the years, and I just didn't catch that change.
So what is the pleasure of the board? The 20th or the 27th? I think either one is going to be somewhat limited, hopefully for just urgent matters with a desire not to have lots of staff presentations. So which way do you want to go?
Doesn't matter to me, as long as we're not going to plan on calling an emergency meeting.
All right, do we want to stick with the 27th when school gets started?
Stick with the 27th.
Okay. All right. Others are fairly similar. And again, this can be amended. This was just to put some dates for us to put in our calendars now for planning purposes. So we have the changes on May 11th, 25th, and June 8th, moving to the beginning of the regular board meeting to 6:00 PM. And to have July 27th remain as the single meeting date in July. Is there a motion to approve or to adopt the school board meeting schedule?
I move to approve the school board meeting schedule.
Second.
Approve with the changes, right?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion carries. Ms. Hall will make those changes and post that and send us our wonderful meeting invite so we can put them on our calendar. Let's see, our next, our next is our Virginia School Board Code of Conduct for our school board members. I have a copy of that. I know it is attached to the agenda. Like last year, I thought we would all have signed this, and then it would be posted in board docs and sent to each one of us. I believe we have all seen this before. So is there a motion to approve the adoption? And then, like I said, at the end, before you all leave, please make sure you sign it. Motion?
Second.
Oh, no, not, I didn't motion. Somebody said motion.
Oh, motion.
Oh, sorry. All right. All those in favor of approving the V SBA Code of Conduct for school board members, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and we will sign this at the end, or we can pass it around like.
Do we sign one and then pass it?
Yes, we can just pick one and we'll sign, and so, yes, thank you. Next is our adoption of the administrative authorizations. These are very householdkeeping items. Is there a motion to approve the 2021 administrative authorizations? Is there a motion to approve the two thousand twenty one administrative authorizations?
Motion to approve two thousand twenty one administrative authorizations?
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. Our next one is the board members to serve on our committees and boards. I don't know if, does anybody have any changes or, or requests to change any of the current committees? I'm, I'm fine with where I am, but I'm also fine if somebody else wants to take one of my spots. So whatever anybody wants to do is fine with me.
I'm happy on Parks and Rec.
Okay.
But I'm willing if someone else would rather.
Just like I usually say in comment, public comment, no one's leaping over the chairs to do that. So I would ask that there be a motion to just approve the appointment of the current school board members serving on the three committees listed.
Move to keep the current appointment of members on their school board committees.
Second.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously and the committees can continue to do your, their work. The next one is our awards and recognitions. This is a proclamation for our Virginia School Principals Appreciation Week, which will begin January twenty fourth and go through the thirtieth. The reason we're doing it now is when we have our next meeting, we will already be, the meeting, the appreciation week will have started. So I'm going to go ahead and read that and then I'm really happy to report this evening, we are going to, by name, recognize our principals. And I would just like to say they've done an amazing job in a challenging, challenging environment. Whereas school principals work cooperatively to direct, develop and inspire all members of the school staff and school body and to communicate effectively with parents to engage them in the learning process. And whereas principals serve as educational leaders, responsible for managing the policies, regulations and procedures necessary to ensure a safe and effective learning environment for all students in Virginia's public and private schools. Whereas principals and teachers are entrusted with the opportunity and the responsibility of guiding, directing, nurturing, mentoring and imparting knowledge to our children while they are at school. And whereas principals must work collaboratively with teachers, staff, students, parents and the community at large to proactively prepare students to be self-reliant and productive citizens. Whereas Virginia School Principals Appreciation Week is an opportunity to recognize the hard work of Virginia school principals and to recognize the importance of principals in ensuring that every child has access to a quality education. Whereas Stafford County Public Schools is especially pleased to have the following principals leading their schools during this challenging time. Mike Archimbo, Rodney Thompson Middle School, Kim Austin, Kate Waller Barrett Elementary School, Andy Bathke, Dixon Smith Middle School, Karen Bingham, Wide Water Elementary School.
Rob Bingham, H H Pool Middle School, William Boatwright, A G Wright Middle School, Rita Cavatayo, Phoenix Center for Innovative Learning, Greg Daniel, Colonial Forge High School, Scott Elchenko, Stafford Middle School.
Does anybody have Brian?
Oh. Brian Fitzgerald, Margaret Brent Elementary School, Bob Freeman, Ferry Farm Elementary School, Caroline Goddard, Anthony Burns Elementary School, Alan Hicks, Stafford High School, previously Hampton Oaks Elementary School, Dr. Dan Horneck, North Stafford High School.
Amy Ivory, Edward R. Drew Middle School, Sally Johniken Putnam, Follin Elementary School, Greg Maki, Annie Moncure Elementary School, Kathy Massey, Rising Star and North Star Early Childhood Education Centers and Mary Grace McGraw at Shirley High Middle School.
Ryan Raska, Hartwood Elementary School, J R Raybolt, Conway Elementary School, Terry Rivero, Rock Hill Elementary School, Tim Roberts, Brookpoint High School, Nick Roman, Rocky Run Elementary School.
Stephanie Sanders, Stafford Elementary School, Mike Sodbotham, Grafton Village Elementary School, Kiana Seerman Butler, Park Ridge Elementary School and Dr. Jim Stimple, Mountain View High School.
Becky Wardlow, Winding Creek Elementary School, Susan Wiederhold, Hampton Oaks Elementary School, Katie Werner, T Benton Gale Middle School and Alexis White, Garrisonville Elementary.
That the school board of Stafford County hereby proclaims January twenty fourth through thirtieth as school board, as school principals appreciation week throughout the school division. I know that we will be mentioning that and I hope that many people will reach out to our principals because these are some amazing people. So thank you very much for your service. All right. Next, we're going to have special presentations. Our first group is going to be led by Ms. Carrie Neely with our elementary focus group. What I'm going to ask the board is, we all have plenty of paper in front of us. If we could let Ms. Neely get through her presentation, everybody will get a turn to ask questions. But I would just ask, let's let Ms. Neely go through the whole presentation first.
Thank you. And before I begin, I would just like to, I'm sure I can speak for our secondary chiefs as well, that we certainly second the hard work of our principals. And it's just, it's an amazing group to work with. So thank you for recognizing them this evening. So, good evening, Madam Chair and school board members, Dr. Kizner. It's really a pleasure of mine to be here tonight to share with you in a time that's really pretty challenging, something that has given me some hope. And I hope that as you hear more about a project that we're working on in elementary, it will give you some hope for the future too, because we all need that right now. So our first day back from our winter break, we gathered a group of teachers from lots of different backgrounds in elementary, lots of different job responsibilities, some administrators. So we feel like we have a good, well-rounded group to speak to some of the challenges and some of our successes so we can plan for the future in the world of elementary. So our mission is pretty much what's, what's been working or what's working better than it did when we started. There are a lot of things, the good news is, that's working better, thankfully, than when we first started. Where do we have room to grow or revise the work that we're doing? And this committee or focus group is just really serving as a conduit to go back to schools, to share our learning and then to bring their expertise back to us. And finally, we just want to tap into teachers' voices. You know, sometimes, you know, I know sometimes the board hears, are, are you asking teachers, you know, what they're thinking, their thoughts? Because often they have the answers just like asking students and we want to get to that piece as well. So we want to make some recommendations for some revisions moving forward, some perhaps professional development moving forward, just in the name of continuous improvement. And they're just an amazing group. I will tell you that. So some of the things, so what we've been doing is we have been able to do some breakout sessions where we have small group talk and small group think and then we come back into the whole group to share. We have facilitators that are recording that group think on a Google form so that we are able to keep that, look at it and look for trends that our small groups come up with. And one of the things that we've noticed that has been something we hoped would happen, that actually is happening, is that sense of collaboration among our P L Cs and among our teachers as you kind of have to collaborate to do this work these days. So that's been a plus that we don't want to lose. Parent communication was an area that they noted. It's always been important. It's even more important now. And we do have some tools that allow us to do that, sometimes more efficiently than we've been able to do in the past. And we have many parents joining us alongside of their students. Support for a new learning environment, so that comes from the world of technology. It comes from LOD. I, I do, it did please me to hear that teachers noted that they do feel, even though this work is really challenging, they can feel the support that we're trying to offer. So that was a, that was a highlight. Believe it or not, Canvas was in one of the areas of something that they recognized that does have some features, communication features, for example, that teachers recognized as being something that's working. I probably would say it's in the working better category. And then the early start for elementary has been huge because when students come in, they get right to work, there's no downtime. When they leave, the buses are all there. They have, they, they're out and teachers, students are out and that allows more time for teachers to plan. So that's definitely been noted. And just that early student time also gives our students that accessibility to learning when they're kind of spot on as younger students in the morning. Some areas for growth, we still are working to differentiate our instruction. Again, that's something that we're working on constantly anyway and it's even more of a challenge now and something that we're focusing on. Targeting those individual student needs, the afternoon sessions came up as something that we need to look at. Oftentimes, it's hard to get our students back if they didn't have morning structured, if they weren't with a teacher in the morning, it's, it's difficult sometimes to get them back in the afternoon. So we're, we're challenged with that. We have some schedule adjustments that we want to look at. Our pre-K, for example, doesn't come to school until ten o'clock. That's really difficult for a young student, as you can imagine. Some of them are ready for a nap about the time they come in. We have teacher stamina included in that afternoon piece because they're kind of really developing two lessons for the day, even though it's a similar lesson. Of course, you have, you know this if you're instructors, those of you who are, that you have to, you have to adjust for different groups. We have attendance at specials can be a, a challenge sometimes. Most of our specials are, are not face to face. They're in the asynchronous time. So we're looking to provide some more synchronous time in our specials. We know that that's where some of our students get their real joy. I was one of those students. And asynchronous learning, the student attendance there is, you know, still something we're working on. Because there, in, in some situations, you know, it's really difficult for a parent to provide that time and flexibility in their schedule for a student to do it at the time that it works for a parent. So, so we're still struggling a little bit with that or challenged. And then finally, the assessments, our teachers are still working toward understanding what students know, where they are. And that's with formal assessments and also just with the day in and day out, assessing student progress. So one of the things that we talked about in our first meeting was our elementary catalog that our, I'm sorry, our Canvas catalog, which includes a new, well, relatively new, as it was developed right before winter break. A course on Canvas and this idea of concurrent teaching was included in that. We have some technology that's new that supports the concurrent teaching that is occurring in most of our schools in some fashion. Some schools are dipping into it a little bit more than others. So we wanted our focus group to learn more about that as we move forward. We don't know that we're all going to move to concurrent teaching in the world of elementary, but it's something we want to explore some more and certainly we have the tools to do that now. So our meeting yesterday focused on, Dr. Rebecca Towery shared with us some national research on learning loss, including some things we're finding out locally. For example, we know that reading literacy is a challenge in our earlier grades. Math literacy becomes a challenge in grades three through five as the learning becomes more abstract. So we feel like that's an important thing for us to keep in mind as we're planning for the future. We know that we have to pay attention to our students and our teachers' social, social, emotional needs. We have already had responsive classroom for years, which provides one avenue to gauge where students are. But certainly there are more things we can do in that area. So we want to explore that a little bit more. And of course, the family impact, things like moms who have to maybe quit a job to stay home, to be able to monitor their student works. That's a, that's a huge stress for families. So being mindful of those family stresses right now is important. And so our next step would be that our school level representatives will go back. They'll share the information that we have gathered in our meeting. They'll get more information from their school staff, bring it back to us. We'll compile all that information in our last meeting. Our hope is to provide some recommendations to Dr. Kizner so that we can make some adjustments moving forward. So I don't have a crystal ball to tell you exactly what those are, but I feel like it's, it's just an amazing process to be able to listen to our teachers talk through what are the successes, what are the challenges? And we know that until we talk those through, that we can't really address them. So that's basically in summary where we are with our elementary focus group and I'm happy to take any questions.
All right. Any questions? Ms. Hall, our back, start us off.
Carrie, thank you for that. I just have one quick question. We've, we've received some, some feedback from some of the teachers that are back in the classroom and they are ecstatic. And I know we don't hear from everyone and you have a little bit more access to some of those folks. Would you say that the majority of the people that are back in the classroom are happy to be there or do you sense that maybe it's not a majority? Maybe it's half and half. What are you, what are you seeing?
Well, if you're just asking for my sense, which is really all I can give you because I don't have any, any technical, you know, data. I will tell you that when I go into schools, when Dr. Jones, when Dr. Kizner goes into schools, we see teachers who are joyful to be there and who were honestly, the first day back for our hybrid program was like, I think I might have been with you, Ms. Randall, on that day. It, it's like the first, it was like the first day of school again. So that joy is just contagious. I think the other thing that's happened in elementary is the more that we have come into school and we've been part of this, the more we realize that our mitigation strategies are really working. We just have to follow them as adults. When we follow them, they are working. And so even though I certainly know, and you know, we were all anxious coming back. But once our teachers started coming back, preschool is a great example of that. They were our earliest to come back. And we found that when people are following those strategies, they work. And so I would say by and large in elementary, in fact, I'm anxious tomorrow, they'll, we'll be having our, oh, I think I forgot to point out that slide. But tomorrow is our listening tour with Dr. Kizner and he'll be, you know, he'll be getting the voices as well of elementary teachers. And, you know, certainly there are folks who have, you know, who are anxious, as we all are. But there are a lot of teachers who know that students really need us right now and that school is honestly a safe place to be. In, in a lot of ways, much safer than some other places they could be.
Gotcha.
And that's true for teachers too.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you very much.
All right. Anyone else? Ms. Randall?
So when you pointed out some of the challenges, will that mean changes coming? Or does that mean, you know, it's a challenge and you might tweak it or is it a, a challenge and you totally might change it or a combination? What does that mean?
Yeah, probably all of the above, Ms. Randall, just depending. Because I feel certain that we tried to get trending information here. We're going to try to get trending information from our schools. We can't address every single individual challenge. We know that, but we're going to look for patterns and we're going to look for what we feel like we can address. And that may mean a tweak to something. It may mean an overhaul to something or it may mean a, a whole new idea that we haven't tried before. So one of the things that I really enjoy working with a group like this is not necessarily knowing all the answers going in. Because I think that what we find when we have a group of folks like we have had in this group, you know, it's just amazing what they come up with. So I don't know the answer to all of those, but I think it will be a combination. But I would say we will probably choose between, you know, five, five, maybe six, seven, maybe more than that. Things that we can address to make a huge difference. We want to go with the things that are going to make the most impact.
Any other questions? Ms. Young?
I think, no, you don't have anything? I, I'm just inquisitive about these two questions and it's not part of the report. So before the report card is given, does a student, the parent and the student know? does a student, the parent and the student know where they are? And are they getting, with the parent, get that one-on-one? Is it a Zoom meeting? When, back in the day, you have, you know, face-to-face with the teacher, and you have to wait five minutes to get in to see? How does that look right now?
Right. Well, we did have parent-teacher conferences, again, you know, even in the Google Meet format this year. So with a standards-based report card, I do think that parents ideally would have a better idea of where their student is when, of course, during a normal year, they're bringing work back and forth. And I think it depends on how much time the parent has been able to devote to seeing that learning happen in action. But, you know, we never want to just give, you know, a report card without an explanation of what we're doing to support areas that are either strengths for students or challenges for students. So that piece, it shouldn't have changed. I will say there weren't as many standards that we were able to assess in this first nine weeks as we typically are able to assess just because teachers and students were learning so many things. But, you know, we're moving forward with that and catching that up as the year goes along.
And so the second question was in reference to the report card. Is it online or do they actually get that paper report in the mail? Because I remember I used to wait for that. I couldn't wait when my kids, because I knew they did well, so I was just waiting, you know, to dole out either 50 cents for a B or a dollar for a A. But are they getting paper reports?
Right. They can get paper reports. We can also do that online now for elementary. We kind of made that shift. But if a parent needs that paper report, we still obviously can offer that as well.
Good, good to know. Thank you.
Yes, Dr. Warner. Thank you for the report. I'm very interested to know, you talked about reading literacy and addressing new challenges with that, with the absences from school. Are there any additional resources that you can think of that we might need that would help with that? And then you talked about, you might as well go on and talk about the math. As I realize that for many students, I mean, this is a progressive subject. They have to build on what they know. So I'm wondering what adaptations we might be able to look at and if there's any additional resources we might need to do that, to address those two concerns.
Right. So the math is stuck in my mind, but you, remind me of your first question?
Reading literacy, you talked about the difference between the early childhood and the then grades three through five struggled more with math.
Right, right.
So wondering what mitigation strategies we might be considering.
Yeah. So we're gathering mid-year data right now, and we're finding our trend matches the national trend of that, you know, early literacy being something we need to target in-house as well. So we're kind of matching that. You know, you think of your building blocks with reading. It kind of makes sense when you think about it that reading for a younger student and learning in this way would be more of a challenge. So to me, that makes perfectly good sense. In the older grades where you're getting into more abstract concepts with math, you know, we're finding that's a challenge as well. So again, we're sifting through our mid-year data right now. I believe that testing window ends in a few weeks, so we'll be compiling that data. And that's where kind of the rubber meets the road. Now, now what? One of the things we know we're going to need to plan for next year is that RTI process, response to intervention. So whether it's reading or whether it's math, how do we meet a student where they are? How do we get the resources? That was the other question you had asked, was resources. We've been really fortunate that Dr. Kizner has, you know, wanted, wanted to know what we were lacking so we could open up windows. We've definitely added peer professionals where we needed support to offer some breakout groups. Jan Strike is working with principals right now to develop a plan for learning loss so that we've gotten a little flexibility from the state. She kind of worked her magic for something that we probably have needed for a while so we can do some creative things to address student needs in small groups. Because you guys know, when you're in a smaller group, you're generally more engaged when it's at your level. And we really want to target the, we want to target the specific areas because we don't have time to waste. So we want to make sure that when we are doing that work, we're doing the right kind of work, whether it's in reading or whether it's in math. So that's our plan moving forward, and our teams are working right now to address those.
Well, that was, that was kind of what I was looking at. And I was wondering if there was any way to start implementing those smaller groups like now for certain students to start targeting these things so that next year, we're not, we're not, they're not slipping further behind.
Absolutely, yeah. And one of the pieces that we can offer now, and schools are designing their own plan, but one of the pieces of flexibility is we can actually offer those smaller groups. For example, if a teacher were to use her planning time during the day and use, and plant, this is her individual, not obviously her PLC time or his, you could flip that so that if a student can't stay after school, because we may have some challenges with transportation, those kinds of things for students to stay after school, we can actually embed that during the school day, which honestly will be more effective for many students anyway.
Anyone else? All right. Yes, I think Ms. Neely, thinking along the lines as we look at our CARES Act funding and things like that, I know that we've done a great job coordinating, and it seems like this information is going to be very helpful in that. Can, are you all also examining a summer or piece of this? Or I know right now, we still have the next semester, so I'm not trying to, but, you know, sort of getting out dates or what those options might look like this summer since families vacation plan, everything is so up in the air. But I think if that's an option coming and there's dates, I think the sooner, as always, than we can get that out. Is that being discussed?
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. I know a lot has already started that discussion, and, you know, it's our hope to offer a probably more of a ramped-up summer session than we've ever had before, even though last year was pretty ramped up in terms of what we were able to offer in the different sessions. We hope that that would be even more this year. And we'll have, we'll be better equipped to do it the right way this year because we've learned so much in terms of our learning in the virtual world.
If there is a teacher or staff member watching tonight, don't know about that, but we'll see. And they have some idea, and they haven't been part of this group. Is, what's the best way for them to maybe communicate an idea or whatever? That they're saying, oh, you know, maybe that didn't work with my schedule. But how would they best get an idea or comment to this group?
So every school, every single elementary school has a representative. And every week, they're sharing back out what we've talked about, and then they're getting feedback that they're bringing back to the group, and we're compiling that information. So they are certainly, you know, first and foremost, bring it up in your school as part of your school discussions, and we'll be getting that feedback. But again, I'm Carrie Neely, and they can always email me personally. And I absolutely love hearing from folks because it helps me learn. So Neely with three E's.
Great. Thank you for coming this evening and letting us know about what's going on on our elementary side.
Absolutely. Thank you all for your support.
Sure. All right. Now we're graduating from elementary. We're going to move up to middle and high school for our presentation regarding the upcoming hybrid plan. Dr. Greider and Dr. Nichols, come on down.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Kizner. Dr. Nichols and I are very excited to talk to you about our hybrid program, which we hope to implement this in February. Just a quick overview of our presentation this evening. We'd like to review both the middle and high school schedules. We'd like to talk a little bit about concurrent teaching, and then also safety and mitigation strategies. And then finally, we have a sample video from one of our high school principals that we feel like does a great job in giving an overview of those safety and mitigation strategies. So like the elementary school, we will have a Group A and a Group B. That's probably where the similarities end between elementary and secondary schedules. As you can see from the chart, our Group A students will attend school on Tuesday and Wednesday, and our Group B students will attend school on Thursday and Friday. And of course, all of our students will remain asynchronous on Mondays, just as they do currently. And then all of our virtual students will, of course, attend school asynchronously on Monday and then have synchronous instruction Tuesday through Friday. So we wanted to just go through the schedules very quickly, and I realize that that's a lot of information to take a look at. But there are a lot of similarities between the middle school and the high school schedule. First of all, one difference is that the middle school will start a little bit later. We will start from, we'll start at 11 o'clock in the morning and end at 4 o'clock. But like the high school, the middle school will have four blocks, so each student will attend four classes a day. And they'll, each block will be about 60 minutes in length, and that's consistent, for the most part, with the high school. In middle school, we'll actually have three lunches during our second block. And those lunches will be in the classroom. We'll also have five minutes passing between each of the periods. In the high school schedule, again, 60-minute blocks, two 40-minute lunches rather than three. So the lunches are a little bit longer at the high school level. And again, during second block. Lunch for the high school students will be either in the gym or the cafe. Principals are still working with their staff to make those decisions. And then just wanted to talk a little bit about our concurrent teaching. We are very fortunate that we are able to provide four days of instruction for all of our students. So that means even though our A students and B students will be in person only two days, they will still be able to join in that same classroom synchronously with that teacher on B days. It's a technology that's enabled us to do that, to have both in-person and virtual instruction. And as I mentioned, that instructional approach is called concurrent teaching. A video developed by our Learning and Organizational Development gives a good overview of what concurrent teaching is. So I'd like to play that for you now. And it works, yeah.
All right. So what did you guys come up with for today? What fraction of each base is occupied by each color? So yellow equals 4/12ths. Yellow equals 4/12ths. Unless you absolutely hear something that you disagree with, we're going to just keep moving for right now. We're not going to, we're not going to have a big conversation about every single part of it. Yep, so far, we, they have said yellow is 4/12ths, red is 4/12ths, and purple is 3/12ths.
Green is 1/12th.
Okay.
Purple has 1/4 of the space.
Fractions in the real world. So I need you to make yourself a little diagram in your notebook. I will get that erased out of there in just a second. I do want to present so these guys can see this a little bit better for a moment. I think it'll be easier to read if they can see it on their screen as well. Create yourself a table. So your table has three columns?
Um, less than a whole. 4/8ths of a cake.
4/8ths of a cake. What kind of cake do you like?
Um, I would prefer a donut cake.
Vanilla?
No, cereal. Cereal donuts are amazing.
Oh, okay. I heard that wrong. All right.
And again, just to wrap up, that was an example of a concurrent teaching delivery model where the teacher is not only delivering to students online, but also the students who are face-to-face. And again, with the technology that you so graciously provided for us, we're able to do that with some big screens, as you saw in the video. The owl that will rotate and pick up sounds and images, and then the technology with the keyboard. So thank you very much for that. I would like to say that with the concurrent teaching, we're also looking, where you can see here, where we've socially distanced our students in a teaching area. And again, they're using the projector, putting the lesson on the board, and also having their students in the Google Meet across the bottom. You can't really see that in that picture, right? But those students are also participating in a concurrent teaching model. Mitigation strategies, we, during the fall, we've, high school principals and Dr. Jones and Dr. Greider, we had the opportunity to visit three different school divisions to look at some concurrent and hybrid models. And so we're able to come back and apply different strategies, which we've learned and what they've learned through trial and error. So in this picture on the right, you'll see that all students and staff who enter our buildings will have their temperatures taken. And again, you can see these students are getting off the bus. They're picking up the hair off their forehead so they can get the temperature taken, and then they'll go on into class. And in the picture on the right, you'll see that wearing masks. Again, that's a requirement for all our staff to wear a mask while they're in the building. In this picture, the teacher on the left also has an optional face shield on for added protection, which is something that they have. And sometimes they use those a lot in some of the CTE classes when they get a little closer, working on a car or something of that nature. You'll also, I want you to note and point out that on the floor, in that same picture on the left, is an air purifier. It looks like a silver suitcase. That is an additional air purifying system that was added to all of our instructional classrooms to help with purifying our air. We also are designing our schools, as Dr. Greider said. We have different classrooms, different sizes throughout our county. So our principals, administrators, their staff have gone through, and they've socially distanced all of the classrooms to ensure that there's six feet of social distance between students in the classes. This also has reduced the class size in half. So we might have had 24 to maybe 28 students. You might have 12 or 14 students in a classroom at this time. But again, you can see where there, some schools have marked off on the floor. Others, due to the furniture, they put two desks together where one student is just using one desk at all time because you can only get into that desk on the left side. So the picture on the left, you really can't get into the other desk. So they use one desk, and they're socially distanced throughout the class. And we look at cleaning. You can see in these pictures that students are cleaning their desks. In some of our tours, in some of the examples, we've learned that, you know, one of the biggest things that we're going to need help in cleaning desks in between class. And the students from one of our trips said that the students took ownership for their own desk and that they used, they started the year out by cleaning at the end of the block. But then they said, hey, hey, I want to be responsible for my own assigned seat when I walk into the class. So as students walk into our classrooms, they're going to go up and use hand sanitizer. We have hand sanitizer throughout the building, but it'll also be in the classroom. They're going to clean their hands. They're going to grab a paper towel, and they're going to go over and wipe down their desk. Now, before the students get into class, the teacher is simply going to take the spray bottle, box of beer, and they're going to walk around, just spray the desk surface on the chair. It sits for a minimum of 60 seconds. And then it can be wiped off, or it could just dry, and it'll leave a little residue. So that's why they're wiping it off. But even if they didn't wipe it off, it's still going to provide the safety and the cleaning and the disinfection that we need between students. Some of our schools are also going to have their students do that at the end. They clean it again. They're going to clean off their desk and then clean their hands, and they're out the door at the end of the block. But again, it's not taking five to 10 minutes to clean the surface. It's, the solution sits on the desk for one minute, and then they can move on. Signage. If you've been going to the schools, which I know you have, you've seen a lot of signs all over. From entering the building to saying that you need to make sure that you social distance between six feet. You have to wear a mask upon entering the buildings. To directional areas, sending you either down a one-way hallway or ensuring that you're going the right way on the right side of the hallway. or ensuring that you're going the right way on the right side of the hallway, or on the left side of the hallway coming back. And you have signs throughout for social distancing. You're also going to find these signs in our cafeteria. And you can see here specifically a couple of the examples. Students are transitioning between classes. And that's a concern, and what we've done is that we have marked hallways. In some of our schools, North Stafford, their hallways are a lot smaller and narrower. So they do have one-way directional signs throughout their building, as you can see on the picture on the bottom on the right. And then the one on the left, you'll see where students are transitioning to a class. There's keeping to the right of the hallway, and they're maintaining a six-foot social distance as they go down. And we're, the biggest thing is we want to move students swiftly and quickly to their next spot. They're not going to be hanging out in the hallways, communicating. They're going to go right to class. And you look at lunchtime. All of our students have the opportunity to either bring their lunch or to purchase or have lunch provided in our cafeteria or in their classrooms. As Dr. Greider said, the middle schools will be eating in their classrooms, and they'll be six-foot social distance, and they will have their lunch. At the conclusion of lunch, they'll clean their desk with the same spray, which kills, and we had concerns about allergies. It will still kill the oil and clean up the oil from any peanut allergies and things. So when they finish eating, they clean their desks, and then we'll move on. And again, the students will come into that class afterwards. They'll clean the desk before they start. So there's a double cleaning in between that for students at the middle school. At the high school, we're having our students, they're going to be eating, they're going to be receiving their lunches in the cafeteria. Our schools have socially-distanced cafeteria lines, as you can see on the left at Mountain View, where they have students, they have a orange, big dots, six feet apart, all the way down the hallway, or the cafeteria, excuse me, where they're going to be standing, six feet apart. And they'll go up, and the cafeteria staff will provide a lunch box. But they do, might have one or two choices, but it's pretty much, here's your lunch. They'll go back, and they will find a seat. In the high schools, as I said, they were working with their numbers that they've been receiving based on the number of students that are coming in for hybrid learning. And some of our schools are having desks in the cafeteria, six feet apart, right, left, front, and back, where the students will sit in an assigned seat during lunch, so we know where our students were at in case we have to do any type of tracing. It's the same thing in the classroom. There'll be assigned seats, so we can go back and do any kind of contact tracing. We also have students, and some of our schools will be eating in the gymnasium, where they may pull out the bleachers, and they'll have students spaced out, six feet apart, left to right, and then up and down the bleachers. And again, they, with the numbers that we're looking at, we can get 200, 300 kids in our seating capacity. So we should be able to have all of our students swiftly go through lunch within 40 minutes. The administrators will regulate the students coming down to get their lunch, so we don't have everybody coming at one time. They'll regulate by classroom. They've already been timing the amount of time it takes to go through the lunch. And again, we'll, again, we've learned from some schools that have been doing this, and have taken their suggestions to implement into our schools. And you can also see there the internet cafe. Some kids are sitting at the tables with some barriers between them. But again, six feet apart in the cafeteria when there wasn't lunch. And then I'd like to finish off with a video. We've asked all of our principals to provide additional information on their websites. They'll all be holding town halls in the next two weeks and provide parents the opportunity to submit questions, and they'll answer their questions for them. And again, with Mountain View, the video that I'm going to share with you is, of course, from Mountain View. And he put his out before the break as they were getting their surveys, and some of the others are going up this week. I think it represents what we want.
Hello, Mountain View Wildcat community. I know right now you've been given a survey on whether you want to come back to a hybrid model of instruction, starting second semester on February 2nd, or if you want to stay virtual and remain at home for your classes. You might have a lot of unanswered questions about what does school look like? What's going on in school to keep us safe? What can happen? What's going on? Lots of questions. I want to put a short video out first of things that are already in place and that we know about coming back to school. We won't have all the answers just yet, but we do want to share with you what we do know about school and what we've put in place so far. So watch a few minutes, and then that should help you a little bit understand what school might look like when you get back. So the first thing you'll notice about Mountain View High School and all our high schools in Stafford County is that masks will be required on all people entering the school. This does include riding the bus for those students who will be riding the bus. And upon entering the school, you'll see signs reminding you, you must wear masks in the building. This is a non-negotiable. Everyone will be wearing masks, including myself, all teachers, all staff members, and all students. The exceptions will be, of course, when you're eating lunch. Knowing you have to wear a mask in the morning, things will look a little different. Students will not be able to hang out in the morning and chit-chat in the hallways, the cafeteria, et cetera. Upon arrival at school, students will be required to report directly to first block. Again, whether you use the entrance at the student parking lot or the bus lot, you will enter the building and report directly to first block. You'll also notice on the signs when you approach the building is to maintain social distancing. That might be a little more difficult, but you are responsible for maintaining social distancing from one another. That's six feet apart. So as you move about the school throughout the school day, you will be asked to remain six feet apart. The next thing you'll know, want to know about is our classrooms. Our classrooms are set up for social distancing. Each desk is set up six feet apart from each other. Students will be coming in, sitting down at the same desk for every class, meaning you will have an assigned seat in the classroom. Each time you come into class, you will sit in the class the same seat. Additionally, the seats and desks will be cleaned between classes. You'll also notice in the classrooms that there are air purifiers. Air purifiers have been installed in every classroom. This is in addition to our school-wide air purifying system. So classrooms will have a second air purifier in the classroom. Another thing you'll notice as you walk about our school is we do have hand sanitizers. Hand sanitizers have been located in multiple places around the classrooms and the hallways to give you the opportunity to hand sanitize as often as you may like. So as you enter the building, you'll notice that there are markings on the floor. This will help our directional travel. We have arrows pointing the direction you should be walking and which side of the hallway you should be walking on. A couple of things that will change is students will be required and expected to walk to and from directly to their classes. Students will not be able to stand around in the hallway, chit-chat, say hello, and what have you. We will be asking you to follow the arrows, the directional arrows, on the right side of the hallways, and move directly from class to class. Lunches will look different this year. As you can see in the picture, we've replaced the tables and chairs with desks and chairs that are marked six feet apart. Again, social distancing when you have your mask off while eating. Students will require to maintain six-foot social distancing while standing in line. We have circles on the floor, as you can see, that will mark the spot where you would sit, waiting in the lunch line. These desks and chairs will be cleaned between the lunch shifts. And again, students will have assigned seats in lunch. Don't worry, you'll get to pick your own seat to sit around your friends, but you will have to return to that seat each lunch shift, the one you choose, so that we can make sure we know who's sitting around who for contract, contact tracing purposes. Lastly, there might be concerns about the bathrooms. Bathrooms will be locked during the bell change so that we can ensure social distancing. You will be asked to go to the bathroom during the class time. You'll be asked to sign out, use the bathroom, and go back to class after using the bathroom. So hopefully, that gave you just a little bit of information about what school's going to look like. In January, we're going to have a virtual town hall like we did earlier in the year. I'll send out an email where you can submit your questions. It'll be live right here, and we will answer your questions about what school will look like, maybe some other questions that weren't answered tonight, but we'll do that in January after the winter break. I hope everyone has a restful, relaxing winter break, and...
And again, that's just an example of one of the high school videos that was put together to share with their community so they could see the mitigation strategies in person without visiting the school. So with that, Dr. Greider and I are here to answer any and all of your questions that you may have for us. In regard to the hybrid program.
Before you get into questions, let me give you a little numbers. At the middle school, based on the parent selection, 49% selected hybrid, 44% selected virtual, seven we did not receive responses. At the high school level, 46 selected, 46% selected hybrid, 48% selected virtual, and 6% we did not receive responses. So the way I would maybe just suggest, just to make life easy, if you have a high school of 2,000, and if, and if the number was 50%, we would have 1,000 students that selected hybrid. And based on the schedule that, that was shared, you would have half of those in on two days a week. So you would have 500 on Tuesday and Wednesday, and 500 on Thursday and Friday. And if you have a middle school about 1,000, you would have 250 in on two days and 250 on another day.
Dr. Kizner, real quick, from, Dr. Kizner, the percentage that you gave, was it for the folks that responded to the survey, correct?
Right. We had actually a pretty good response rate. We only had, at, at the middle school level, we had a 93% response rate. And at the high school level, we had a 94% response rate.
So those percentages are across the entire division. Do those percentages hold up by school?
Yes, I have. That's a great question, and I have the answer. That's why it's a great question. So at the, oh, shoot. I did have it at the school. Well, here it is.
You might just tell us which school has the largest percentage and what that percentage is, just to give us a feel.
We do have it. I actually have it at the grade level, and we also have it at the high, I don't have the slide with the school level. But there is some variability, not great, but there is. At the, at the grade level, I will tell you, which is not surprising, the lower grade, sixth grade, has the highest interest. It goes from 51% at sixth, at sixth grade for hybrid. And the lowest is 12th grade at 43%. So it ranges, most of it is clustering between 46 and 48% at the grade level.
Right. I, when, if you get it, I would really like to see for schools.
I'll send it to you tomorrow.
Because that could be a big, a big effect.
All right. Dr. Kizner, do you have any other comments before? Okay. All right. Questions for Dr. Nichols, Dr. Greider?
Thank you so much for the presentation. One of the questions that I did have was the one that Dr. Chase already asked, but mine's was a little bit different. I was just going to ask, what was the difference in percentage increase of the number of kids that were, that changed from virtual to hybrid? So I just wanted to know if you had that. If you don't have it, then that, that's, that's fine. You don't have that, because that, that would tell me, you know, how many more students we're getting in our schools from where we were, because one of my concerns was ventilation. And specifically, I was looking at North Stafford, you know, our bathrooms don't have any doors. So I was trying to figure out how you were going to mitigate them not, you know, going in there more than they're supposed to for distancing, because it's very small, there's no ventilation. And then, of course, the spigots are manual, so I wasn't sure if that's something that we're looking at.
Yes, ma'am. Several of our principals are limiting the number of students in their restrooms. A sink, if you have five sinks lined up, it's, every other one is garbage bagged off, so they can't use it. So you are maintaining social distance at the sink. They're limiting to about two students per restroom. And actually, that was, Dr. Hornig, I spoke to today about that. He's limiting his to two per restroom.
Okay.
And then, yes, you have to use manual, but again, they're providing the towels to wash, and then the hand sanitizer also as they walk into the hall to add that extra cleaning.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Ms. Randall, go ahead.
I think one of the things that Ms. Young was referring to at North Stafford is that, like, when you were showing us the door to get into the bathrooms, there's an outside door, but in North Stafford, I know, like, across from the office, it's just open. And so there's no way to lock and prevent kids during change of classes from going in there. I think that's what she was alluding to.
Yeah, and again, he was talking that they're going to have some duties outside with their admin and their staff.
Okay.
Where they can help regulate that during class. And one of our schools is actually going to allow the students to use the restroom, but they will have somebody standing outside just to make sure there's always two in.
Okay.
One comes out, one more goes in, things like that. It's hard to regulate it.
Okay. And then my question is, so are, what will the cafeteria in the middle school be used for if there's not lunch in there? And will those children that are buying lunch, will they come down to the cafeteria and get it? And then, like, who's monitoring, tracking them back and forth while there's kids who have their lunch from home? Do they have to, like, get up and go on a field trip to the cafeteria every day? I just, just curious what that looks like.
Sure. So we've worked out with Brian Williams, our food service manager. They're actually going to deliver the lunches, the hot lunches, to the classrooms. My understanding is they do that in the elementary school. At any rate, they will be delivering the hot lunches to the classrooms, so the students won't have to travel. There are a number of uses that we might have to have for the ca, both the cafeteria and possibly the gym. One of the things that we've talked about is still continuing with our internet cafe for students who are not an A or B, they're the opposite day, they would still need to come in. And so that is one of the possibilities for using the cafeteria.
Okay. And then what about, and I know at the high school level, this, I can't really picture all the middle schools, but I know at the high school level, they have the op, the space outside. Sometimes they use it for senior court, but sometimes they allow anyone. But is there that option to use outside patio space at the high schools for lunches, eating outside, or even classes?
Honestly, Mrs. Randall, they haven't thought of that because it is colder weather right now, but in doing that.
Dress.
I know, I know. But in doing that, could they use that at the high school? They could. But again, the thing they have to maintain is assigned seating.
Right.
So by monitoring the outside, if they're not outside and it's raining, they have to come in, and we have to find them an additional seat. Right now, they're trying to keep them in the cafeteria.
Okay.
Or in the gymnasium.
And does the disinfectant have a, like, a really strong smell? I, I know a lot of kids have sensitivity sometimes to that as well.
I would say no. I've seen it used and used it. No.
Okay. And, and I think that's all I had. So, but thank you.
All right. Dr. Chase?
So as somebody who's been doing concurrent teaching for a couple of months now, one of the things I noticed from the display, and I couldn't tell how much of it was because of the size of this screen, but I, if a student's using a Chromebook, their screen is about the size of this screen. It would be very hard to see anything written on that board by the teacher. And so I'm just a little curious about that. Hopefully, I mean, I know, I know teachers in Stafford who are pretty creative, and they may have come up with their, their own solutions. I mean, the solution I use is, is technology that probably every one of our teachers doesn't have, which is I have a stylus that I can actually write on the computer, and then that gets projected for the students in the classroom. And then the students at home can, it's just like I'm writing on their, their computer screen. So I'm just a little concerned about that, but hopefully, teachers are troubleshooting that. And then, did, yeah, go ahead, Jay, if you've got a, Mr. Cook. Mr. Technology.
This is one of the teacher Chromebooks or Elite Books we're bringing to them. They should be getting them in February. And it folds over like this, and you can control the screen.
Great.
What's being shown on the Google Meet, and you can actually use your finger or a stylus.
Great.
To draw right on there. It's very, we're very excited about that.
Terrific. So, so there's a, a solution coming, because, because that's just, they can't really usually see when you're writing on a whiteboard or something like that. So great.
Yes. Yeah, she, Ms. Butler, who's in the video, she didn't have this.
Right.
She just had the meeting owl.
Right, right.
But yeah, she was still extremely, I liked it.
And then my other question was, so how many different rooms will a middle school student be in in the two days that they're in school? And how many different rooms would a high school student be in during the, the two days that they're there? be in during the two days that they're there?
So, it does depend a bit on a student's schedule.
Sure.
But it could be up to about six, six different classrooms over the course of two days.
Okay. And you guys are, have put stuff in place for contact tracing so that you can figure out everywhere that a student has-
So, the students will have assigned seats in every classroom. And as Dr. Nichols mentioned about the cleaning process coming into and leaving the classroom, that will be followed as well. So, I believe that we're going to have not only a list, a hands-on list, but also an electronic list of our students and their seating. So, that would enable us to do better contact tracing.
Okay.
More rapidly, anyway.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Hollerbeck?
On the heels of the discussion on contact tracing, we've gotten several emails from people saying that we're only going back a day for contact tracing. Is that true? And if so, are we currently? And when we go back, if that is true, are we looking at going beyond a day of tracing?
It's absolutely not true.
Okay.
Following the VDH CDC contact tracing to the T. So, that's all I'm going to say, is that we follow exactly what needs to be followed.
Okay. Thank you. And then, the next one is, are we going to put a cap on the number of students allowed in any classroom, regardless of how many desks we can fit in there at six feet apart?
Yeah. Each, each school's going to be a little different because their classrooms are a little bit different sizes. North Stafford's might have a little larger class than you might find at Stafford in some of their classes. So, again, the administrators went through in August, and they went through and they determined the total number of students that could be in the classroom safely at six feet social distancing. And that's going to be anywhere from 10 to about 14 kids. If you're in a bigger classroom, North has some bigger classrooms, you might be able to get 16 in a class.
Okay.
But they were really big rooms. But again, that's individually. And now that they have the students who have selected hybrid, and they're going back, and they have the A and B students, they're going back and looking at any adjustments to their schedule. They have to move a student from A to B based on size, or move a student from one room to the other.
Okay.
But again, it's based on how many kids are in biology. And if 15 of them all decide to do virtual, and you only had 24 kids in the class, you're probably able to fit the others in.
Gotcha. Okay. Thanks.
Dr. Warner, did you have a question? Okay. Let me just, Ms. Healy?
Just one question. This is for Dr. Kizner. Is this presentation going to be available on our website? Because I know I've gotten lots of questions from parents, what's the day going to look like? And I'm sure the students have it as well. So, if we could make it easier for them to find this presentation, I think it would answer a lot of questions.
Yeah. We'll put it up there tomorrow.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Ms. Young? Or did you have another question, Ms. Healy? Okay.
Let me ask Ms. Hollerbeck. Colette heard your question. Do you want a, you want a better answer than mine? Saying it's absolutely not. If you want to, she's willing to. It's up to you.
Yeah, if she's, yeah, because like I said, I think we've all gotten emails that, from people, saying that they're only going back one day, and it's got a lot of people worried. So, I think this might help the situation a little bit if we can clarify.
Mike, if you could, I don't know how you do it, but if she could speak-
There she is.
Hi, Colette.
When I heard that question, I jumped on. Totally incorrect and totally erroneous. When we contact trace, we look at date of symptom onset and go back two days prior to symptom onset. If the person is asymptomatic and gets tested, we go back two days prior to the test date. Not the results date, but the test date for the contact tracing. So, if you had a PCR test done last Thursday, and you get the results today when you're positive, we go back to last Tuesday to contact trace. So, does that help?
Yes. Thank you.
Colette, can I ask a quick follow-up question? So, if I got my test results on Thursday, and I took the test on Tuesday, I haven't been in the school, have I?
No. If you, as a staff member, have reported that you are getting tested for a COVID test, our new COVID screener will tell you that you are waterproof to enter the building. Students and parents on the survey are asked, you know, to check their children before school. And they are asked to keep their children home if someone in the home is being tested for COVID-19. That's the recommendation from the Virginia Department of Health. And, you know, we're encouraging families, if your student is symptomatic, if there's somebody in the house all that tests positive, until they get a test result, please keep the kids home.
Anybody else have something for Colette? Since she was so nicely came on with us. Before I go to Ms. Young, because it's in the same vein, I hope when we send out something to our families that we very much make that very clear. And I would ask that perhaps exactly what was just stated there of when somebody in the family is being tested, here's the protocol, please call this person, and make that actually fairly prominent on our website. I think that's something we really need to be promoting, what we are, our expectations are for our staff and our families. I believe people do want to comply, and it's more reminders are always better. So, maybe we can look into how we want to really be pushing out that information in the, what I call the big, bold print and jumbo size. So, anyway, thank you again, Colette, for calling in and making that clarification.
No problem.
Thank you. Ms. Young, I think you had a question, maybe not in that vein.
Sure. Does anybody else have any questions before Pam gets a chance to ask her question? I just want to make sure. Yep. Everybody good?
I can't promise that I won't have another question that comes up, Pam.
I just asked one question, and I had two more. But there's folks that had two or three. So, I'm just waiting my turn, making sure everybody asks their questions. Thank you so much, Chairwoman. So, who is monitoring the cleaning in the classroom that the kids are actually cleaning the desk off? Because we know students, right? Some could just decide, that's not what I'm here for, and I'm coming to school, and yeah. So, who is monitoring that? Is that-
Well, that's going to be a part of the daily procedures in the classroom. Principals are going to go over that. Teachers are going to go over that in the class. The teacher's the one that's going to spray the desk as they're greeting kids. The procedure and the routine is to come in, clean your hands, grab the paper towel, wipe your desk. Now, again, if the student fails to wipe their own desk, from what I've been told from Colette and maintenance, that the auxvere solution can dry, and it's not going to hurt anything if they don't. The only thing it would do is maybe leave a small film, but it's not hurting anything. So, if it doesn't get wiped off, it's not going to hurt anything. But again, we are helping that the teachers will spray, walk around and spray in between.
And I think Ms. Randall already asked about if somebody have, you know, have any, like, allergies or anything that doesn't hurt them, right? So, we know that there are different strains now, and even one up to 70%. So, if students are asymptomatic, and we don't know, temperature, you can't tell, they're in the schools. And we know what we're seeing on, in the media. And we know what's going on where some parents don't believe that this exists. And so, we need to address that when a child comes in that listens to their parents and cannot wear a mask or doesn't want to wear a mask. What are we doing with that? Or if a student doesn't wear a mask or takes one off, and whoever is doing the hall monitoring does not, cannot address that or doesn't see it, and something breaks out. Fine. Like, how do we address that? Or is there like a, can I finish my question?
Yeah.
So, is there a policy that if that happens, and I know, you know, we could talk about punishment or all that, but that does not help the situation at that hand? So, I'm trying to figure out, like, would we have something in place prior to school starting where we are talking to the parents, toning things down, and making sure that they understand the rules, regulations, just like Chairwoman Hazard said, that they know what to expect if they break any rules once they come into the school?
Okay. Are you done? Yeah, okay. The school board adopted a policy. You adopted a policy back in July. So, it's pretty clear. If you don't wear a mask intentionally, you are not back the next day. Okay? This is, this is very simple. If you, if you pull it down, and we have to be reminded, you'll be reminded. If you have to be reminded too often, and the administrator feels now you have crossed a line of seriousness, you will not be back the next day hybrid. So, there's no, if we want to use the word punishment, we can, but there's no room for negotiation on this.
Thank you so much for that. I just wanted to make sure that everyone understands that. And all educators treat all students the same way. Do not grant some, you know, a pass versus others, right? Thank you.
And if I could just answer Dr. Chase's question, I have the greatest team in the world, because as they're watching this, they're sending me stuff to make me look better, okay? So, just quickly, and then I'll send this to you tomorrow, anyway. Brookpoint, 45% hybrid. Colonial Forge, 43% hybrid. Mountain View, 53% hybrid. North Stafford, 43% hybrid. Stafford Senior, 43% hybrid. AG Wright, 53% hybrid. Dixon Smith, 51%. Drew, 41%. Poole, 47%. Rodney Thompson, 53%. Shirley Heim, 56%. Stafford Middle School, 45%. Gail, 44%. So, thank you.
Yes. Ms. Healy?
I just have a follow-up question for Dr. Kizner. I totally agree about not coming back the next day, but what are we doing that day if a student doesn't wear a mask? You know, do we have a procedure to move them to a separate place where they're not a potential threat to, you know, other students or the staff? And if we don't, it's something I think we need to address before we go back to school, because it's one thing to say, you're not coming back to school tomorrow, but what happens the rest of the day? Particularly if it's, you know, as soon as they come in the door. So, I'm glad Ms. Young raised that question. And I would like to have some kind of follow-up about the day. It's one thing if it's inadvertent or unintentional that, you know, and it's corrected as soon as it's brought to attention. But if someone just simply refuses, I don't think that it's fair to the rest of the community, the school community, the parents, the staff, to permit that to happen. I don't need an answer right now, but it's something we can address before they come back to school.
Yeah. Just remind you that they're not getting on a bus without a mask. And they're not walking, they're supposed to have a mask when they walk in the building. So, obviously, we would isolate the student, bring them to the office, depending on how they got to school, notify their parents, and address it that way. But it's way too risky to have too many, I think we're all in agreement that everybody knows the rules. And we will remind them the rules in their town hall meetings. And their parents had an option not to have hybrid. So, they selected hybrid. And with the hybrid, which has been on our website for the longest time about the mask policy. So, I have great confidence that the students will follow it. And just so, you know, we've had hundreds of high school kids at school now. And this has not been an issue. Between CTE, internet cafe, the EL hubs, and programs with children with disabilities, we have a lot of kids at the high school level already in there.
And we have masks if somebody arrives at the bus stop? I mean, because I was, you told us this summer that we can't deny them getting on the bus if they don't, if they have a fever or something like that. So, presumably, we can't deny them getting on the bus if they don't have a mask, but we can give them a mask to wear?
We have masks, we always have masks available for students that might accidentally forget it.
Ms. Hazard?
Yes.
Go ahead.
There was two things, okay, but one of them just fell out of my head. So, one of the things that I was wondering was, if we have the kids coming back that have said they wanted to be hybrid, are there any changes being allowed for the hybrid virtual? And second, those students, the 7% and the 6% in the middle and the high school, are they being formally contacted to make a decision as to one way or the other? Because that will also start changing some percentages in our schools.
I can answer this.
Yes, Ms. Randall, our principals, since we closed the survey last week, they've been calling each and every day to all the parents. And the ones that they cannot get in contact with will be scheduled for a hybrid, because it's easier to plan for hybrid. We have a seat for them versus if they, we call them after the fact, and now we try to put them into a hybrid. So, there, again, the numbers are 6% overall. Some of the schools are down to less than 100 students that they're calling, but they're continuing to work on that. And also, those students will be factored into transportation. So, if we don't have a decision one way or the other, we'll factor them into, we're transporting them to school.
All right. Any other questions for our middle and high school leadership?
Thank you. Excellent job.
Yes. Thank you for communicating that information. And as stated, I know it seems like everybody should know the more places we can get this out. So, I appreciate everything that you brought to us this evening. So, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to our citizen comments. However, during our COVID pandemic, we are meeting in a building that is closed to the public. So, this evening, there will not be any in-person public comments. However, we have accepted public comments that have been sent to the clerk. And many of you know that we have emails. So, you may also email your comments to us to be read. And they may also be directed to our clerk for distribution to the board. So, as we said, going forward, we'll be looking and exploring how we can do public comment going forward. In these days when the current building we're meeting in is closed, we needed to comply with the county's directive.
And is it true that the, any of the comments that were sent to the clerk will be put into the record as if the person actually came here to speak?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Will they be read?
Madam Chairman, could we make clear that this was not a school board decision, that we not have public comment? My understanding was it's because we are in a county facility, and the county will not allow us to have members of the public come in. Because I've seen a lot of emails where people say, well, the board has decided it's not safe to have people come in to comment in the public comment period. You've changed your meeting. But yet, you know, we're making decisions to go back to school. I'd just like to make it clear that this was not a school board decision, that this was because, you know, we are using the county facility. Is, that's my understanding. Is that, that is correct? Is that, that is correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
When we walked in, we saw the big sign that said the county buildings are closed. So moving on, we're going to talk about our board committee reports. We'll start with the Joint Schools Working Committee. I'll give a brief overview. One of the action items from that meeting is being brought up in our Action Item in Number 12. We had a joint school committee on December 9th with our three counterparts. We met at Colonial Forge High School. We talked a little bit about the metrics to be used by the board, University of Mary Washington Stafford Campus, which the board of supervisors asked us to consider. Like I said, we will talk about that more in Action Item 12. We put a push-in for our three R list, that perhaps a percentage. And we also made the point about 70 to 80% of our buildings are over 20 years old, just trying to set some priorities and some upcoming needs to our counterparts across the street of needs that we may have coming in the future. We talked a little bit about legislative initiatives. One of the biggest things that we did was we did have the presentation by Mr. Fulmer and Mr. Burnett about our proposed salary schedule, where, what it was based upon, and it was received. I thought, well, we did not have a lot of questions about it. We set forth our comparison by using the metrics and, that the county used with regard to their public safety, and we showed how that was done. It was just a way to give a preview of what we believe will be coming because of course, in two weeks' time, we'll be receiving Dr. Kizner's funding request. And this, we know, will be a huge part of it. We talked about maybe joint wellness initiatives for staff. And there is a meeting tentatively scheduled. Once they make their decisions, we'll be coordinating in that way. So that's a quick overview of that. Next, our Parks and Rec Commission. Ms. Randall.
Hi. Parks and Rec has been meeting in person since the end of summer. And this last meeting that we had, and it's something that will be coming before the supervisors, is about creating an opportunity around the holiday season for a light show for Stafford County. So that seems to be pretty promising. It might, there might be a question that comes to the schools for assistance with parking. And also, there's a new group called Enjoy Stafford. I guess it's quite a growing group. And they have actually reached out to Mr. Huff Stickler, who's an electrician at Stafford High School. He helps with the boots program as well. And he is being asked to help with coordinating some of the electrical things and maybe even getting students in on the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Legislative committee update. Ms. Young?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The General Assembly begins this Wednesday at noon. So it could be like a 30-day session or 30 to 45-day session. Our legislative committee meeting with the Stafford County will be on Friday, January 22nd, beginning at 12:30. It's going to be a Zoom or WebEx. There is a legislative SB 1099, Children's Services Act Special Program. That's going to be on the agenda, I guess, tomorrow. It expands eligibility for services under the Children's Services Act to students who transfer from approved private school special education program to a public school, public education program to provide comparable services received in an approved private setting. That's all I have.
Excellent. Thank you. Any advisory committee reports or other reports coming in? Ms. Young?
Yes, ma'am. So for the Advisory Gifted School Program. On December 16, 2020, Mr. Lane, the Superintendent Lane, provided a report about gifted education throughout the Commonwealth. The findings found that, let me see what the percentage is so I don't mess it up. It found that throughout the Commonwealth, 13.6% of Virginia public school students are identified as gifted, while the national average is 6.5. So that's great, right? The bad news is that Black, Hispanic students and disadvantaged students are disproportionately underrepresented in the gifted, while white and Asian students are overrepresented. Virginia leads the nation in high school properties that offer gifted programs with availability in 92.9 of the schools, whereas the national average is 69.1. We've met, that was just Commonwealth. We've met, was it Monday? January 4th, yeah. So our gifted advisory committee is taking steps to address this gap. In the last meeting, the discussion is about adding opportunities for gifted diverse groups to be recognized and that the criteria by which we identify these students is out of date. Another important point is the lens from which we look at these individuals, identifying students in their own image versus in the white male or female image. And I know this is uncomfortable, but this is something that we have to do. There needs to be less opportunity where implicit bias can hide as a result for the same discipline. It is harder to cheat future gifted students from a chance to show and share their gifts with us. So really, the criteria that we currently have for gifted, we just need to broaden it out. We're not trying to shrink it and say that we need to water down the gifted program. We just need to expand it to include more gifted, as in culture or anything else that other students have to offer. And that's it. Thank you.
Excellent. Any other committee meetings or reports? All right. Hearing none, we will move on to our.
Ms. Hazard, I just wanted to make one point. At the Health Advisory Committee, in November, the Nutrition Service gave a presentation. And it's my understanding that the free lunches are available to any students under age 18 through June. Is that correct, Dr. Kizner? That is, it is. Okay, Mr. Fulmer says correct. I'd like to make sure that our families are aware of that before students come back to school. I mean, I know a lot of families have been participating in the delivery of meals and some are, you know, the ones that are in school are taking advantage. But just so everyone knows that this is, this is something that every student aged, up to age 18 is eligible for. Because I think that there may be some more people that it could, it could help that may not know it's, it's something that's available. And also, the committee is looking into the student wellness policy. And we may be getting a report on that later this year. Thank you.
Excellent. We're waiting for all our reports from our, from the advisory committees. All right. This time, we're going to move on to our board member reports. Okay, do I have any volunteers to get us rolling for 2021? Okay, everybody, don't jump over the seats. Want to get started, Ms. Young? Thank you.
So I hope everyone is well during this pandemic. It has been a tumultuous 2020 year, and I hope this new year gets better. We are in the third and most virulent surge of the COVID-19 virus. This COVID-19 infection rate is at its highest since the pandemic began. Models suggest the number of cases in Virginia will continue to rise into February. And I read that it is already four times higher than at the beginning of the last school semester. So with your health and safety as a primary concern, I want our students back in school. Still, I want our teachers to be vaccinated now, which I talked about last year and brought to my fellow board members and the superintendent's attention. There's a need to be, to have a plan on how we are going to get this done. And I know the superintendent, he sent out surveys. And as a matter of fact, I wrote this before asking him about the results. So I'm not sure if we have results on how many educators decided that they wanted the vaccine. I would like to see an implementation plan and the scope on how it's going to be rolled out. So educators have always been, for me, frontline workers. My concern has always been with our special needs and underserved. And now more so, our middle-class population that cannot be at home with their students because they are frontline workers. My primary concern is also the mental health of our students and our educators. So how are you doing? Can we do a health check on each other? Because God knows, everyone is going through a lot. I cannot comprehend our division of race, political affiliation, or religion. But we need to understand that our children learn from us. If we are anxious, they are too. If we are all angered, we will need to check all of this anger, hostility, and divisiveness at the door when we open our doors. Our schools are a haven for many. So let us not make it a place of hate or division in the spirit of Martin Luther King. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Who wants to go next? Volunteers.
Dr. Warner, do you mind starting this? First of all, I want to, I want to thank everybody for the effort that's gone into getting our kids back in school. I do want people to realize that we do get the emails and we do take this very seriously. We are concerned not only about our students' health, but their mental welfare and their educational welfare. We're concerned about our families who have been frontline workers since this began. And many of these families have had a difficult time juggling their students at home and their responsibilities with work and their family. It's put a tremendous strain on a number of people. We have worked extremely hard, Dr. Kizner and his staff. I am truly impressed with how hard they have worked to successfully introduce mitigation strategies that have kept our schools safe. We have not had major outbreaks. We haven't had to open and close schools and classrooms. And I think that's a testament to the efforts that his, his staff has, has put into this and the way that we have approached these mitigation strategies, the way we have approached improving the technology so that our students have better access to the, the learning models that, that we can provide. Going forward, I think that we have to get our kids back in school. I think for their safety, their, their mental health, their education, for the families that, that are struggling. And remember, all students do have an option. They can choose to stay home and do a virtual plan. I just think that we are taking this seriously. We do put everybody's health, it is a, a primary concern. Our students, our teachers, our staff, our families. We are doing everything we can to make sure that these, that they can enter school safely. And we are listening. So let's just try to work together and get, get through this next six months until we can get the vaccines in people's arms. Thank you.
Thank you. Actually, I'll switch around. Ms. Hollaback?
I'm just going to say Happy New Year, and I hope this year goes a lot better than last year did. So welcome back, everybody.
All right. Dr. Chace?
Yeah. So let's see. Before the break, I got invited to see the rollout of the Equity Dashboard. And I want to thank Jay Cook for all of his work. And it is looking good. I'll be happy, I don't know if it's on the website yet, but I think it's coming. And it'll help a lot in terms of our, being able to get a sense of, of taking the temperature of our system, right? What can we do to continue to infinitely improve and get better, right? And I hope that it'll help with our planning for the recovery in the coming year as well, being able to see if, if particular groups maybe are in need of even more assistance. I imagine everybody's going to need some, some help. And then I'm going to be visiting Drew Middle School on Friday to get in there and actually take a look at how the mitigation stuff is set up. So I'm looking forward to that. And then I wanted to share, I sent out an email to my students at the beginning of the semester. And I'll just share with you what I received this afternoon. So I wrote, "We are in the middle of a global pandemic. I think it's very important during this time that we try to be patient and kind to one another. What are some circumstances you can imagine where you might need me to be patient with you? How would you like me to show kindness, kindness towards you? What are some situations in which you might need to be patient with your professors? How can you be kind towards your professors?" And this is a reply I got this evening. "I think that health situations, personal or family, are very important to understand and take seriously. I help take care of my baby sister every day, and my home life is not very good. My father is at work all day, and my mother is too busy to take care of my one-year-old sister. So my siblings and I do it all day long. This means that sometimes I cannot have my camera or mic on unless you want to see a crazy household with a TV blaring Mickey Mouse Club house, a loud mom on the phone, my siblings' classes, and my baby sister making loud baby noises. Ha ha. I also sometimes have a hard time getting things done during the day. I am a housekeeper from 8:00 AM to 7:30 PM usually. My classwork time is when she naps or when I'm free at night. I will always be getting my things done as best as I can, but sometimes I will probably send you an anxious email. I will respect everyone, including you, the same way I want to be respected. Real life happens. It isn't fake, and it isn't an excuse. It's life. We're all people, and we all need to get through this." And so I just, you know, I know that there, I know that Dr. Warner didn't mean it quite the way she said that our students have a choice. Some of our students don't have choices. Some of our students will not be able to come in for hybrid, even if they want to, because they need to be home watching their younger siblings while their younger siblings are doing hybrid. And so just as a reminder that, that all of us need to, who can, I feel so fortunate that I, my children have not had to go through this. I don't have children at home. I'm not having to juggle the way some of our teachers are, some of our doctors and nurses are. And so just a reminder that we all need to, you know, pull it together and, and help where we can.
Thank you. Ms. Randall?
Good evening and Happy New Year. And I hope it is an incredible new year. I, you know, it was funny when I was talking with Ms. Hazard the other day and realizing I've come up on my one year of being on the board, but how much my one year looks so different than, well, Dr. Warner and I's one year looks so different than any other members up here because there were no musical and theatrical celebrations and performances that we were able to see, awards, fun assemblies, graduations. Our year was much, much different. But, you know, as much as I miss all of those things and I hurt for the people that hurt because they missed those things, you know, I've also had more opportunity to work with my members up here on a multitude of things, including just getting to know them. But as I have time, and I've had much more time home with my family this year, past year, and then, you know, they're leaving now to do their things for school or work, I just wanted to remind everybody that during a pandemic, panic isn't going to help. We need to just remember peace and calm, both for our families, for our kids, and for ourselves. In reading the worry and the angst of staff emails and for some, and then we get some from others saying, you know, "This is where I want to be, in the classroom with my kids." And we just get, and I'm glad you're getting it out. I'd rather it out than in. But I also want to remind us that sometimes when we can do something, as Dr. Chace was saying, for someone else to show kindness. I mean, we've seen opportunities to help Stafford Food Security because they're helping our families and our neighbors. Dan's Pharmacy in North Stafford has a table of groceries out front for families that may need something to help them get by, knowing that a family may need a ride or having, you know, someone that might need help. And, you know, I have two neighbors that are recovering from COVID and they need someone to take them for a walk as part of their therapy. Just any things, anything like that that can be done as a, as an opportunity for patience and calm and peace and kindness, I think are things that we need to keep moving forward with, that we just need to understand that just because we're worried doesn't, worry isn't going to solve anything. So let's find ways to help yourself first and help others as well. Thank you and Happy New Year.
Just very briefly, I'd like to thank all of our teachers who are working way, way more than they've ever worked before. Day, night, weekends. It's, it's just incredible. But they're doing it so their students will be able to, to get the learning that, that they need. And it's not just the teachers, it's the support staff, the central office staff, the administrators, it's everyone in our schools. And I just want to say, I'm so proud that we are working together to make this as positive as it can be, you know, for, for our students. And also to thank our families who are supporting, you know, the, the schools in this, this time because. because it's just incomprehensible what we're going through. I mean, if someone had told me this, you know, even a year ago, two years ago, I would have thought they were, you know, coming up with some science fiction story. But this is reality, and we're in it. And I'm just so grateful that we have staff who are putting the students first and the families that are making the sacrifices that are necessary. You know, I don't have a child in school now, but I can imagine the difference it would make in the household to be supporting that child in going through this different learning module. So just thank you. And hopefully this year will end much differently than it began. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I'll just do the opening of 2021. We made it. "No one knew how a pandemic would impact our community and our education system. Some have described the experience since last March as flying an airplane while trying to build it." I have heard that phrase many times. "And although I think there's some truth to that statement, I would like to offer another view from another mode of transportation, and I'm sure you all know which one, sailing a boat. Please know I am much better at the latter and not the former. My phrase for this year is we can't change the direction of the wind, but we can adjust the sails to reach our destination. Sailing is about making adjustments in reaction to the wind, the current, the weather, while ultimately keeping the destination in your sights. There are many things we cannot control, and that change constantly in relation to this pandemic. However, in Stafford County Public Schools, our destination and our goal have not wavered. We want to provide the best education for students and a great working environment for our staff. Dr. Kizner and his team are constantly monitoring the wind and every other factor, and they're all factors that to most extent we cannot control. Those are the toughest ones that you have to monitor. Our leadership teams are making adjustments as we continue to provide education services. We have to be flexible, be smart, pay attention, and support one another. As we sail through 2021, please know that much work is being done to keep Stafford schools on course. Please join in supporting the team, offering suggestions, remaining flexible, be informed, and follow the directions. The course may not be easy. It may not be straight. And we're probably not going to avoid the rough seas. But, and I hope you all remember this, as every sailor knows, there's no better tool or equipment you can have onboard than a well-trained crew. We have amazing people in Stafford County Schools, in our community, our students, our families, and our community partners. Together, we can reach our destination and goal of offering the best education services to our students and a great working environment for our staff. Let's have a great year, and let's all work together and keep our eye on the goal and support each other because we do have a really well-trained crew." Thank you. And Dr. Kizner, you're up.
All right, thank you. Today, we completed our fourth town hall meeting. Tomorrow, we'll have our fifth. That's five in four weeks. And then Thursday night, I have my staff advisory committee, which in a sense is another town hall format, representatives from every school. Every Tuesday, Stafford County Schools, along with Spotsylvania, Fredericksburg, Caroline, and King George, meet with the Rappahannock Area Health Department. We had our meeting today. I want to remind the public and the school board the four metrics that we look at. One, our health mitigation strategies. Are we able to follow them based on the CDC and VDH guidelines? Two, our ability to contact trace. Are we effectively able to follow the contact tracing protocols again by VDH? Third, school-based transmissions, different than community-based transmissions. Are we beginning to see people get tested positive because of school-to-school contact? And then the fourth, which is critically important, staffing. Do we have not only the number of staff, but the right staff? You know, you need certain qualifications to drive a bus, teach certain classes, and so on. So that data is evaluated. We review it every day, and then we discuss it on Tuesday with the Health Department. We received very good information today, good news. It goes to Ms. Young's question about vaccination. Last week at our meeting, we were told that every community was going to have two vaccination clinics, two at the end of January, and then, you know, it's a double dosage, and then two at the end of February. The Health Department partnering with the Mary Washington Hospital, we should be able to start the vaccination for our staff next week. The Mary Washington Hospital has a good supply of vaccines that they will be able to, the school divisions I mentioned, they would be able to give a vaccine to everyone who wants one in all of those school divisions. We're still waiting for a final, not authorization as much as the logistics, but it's a very positive news. We're not 100% sure which vaccine they will be giving. One is a 21-day separation, another one's a 28-day separation. But regardless, the clinics that I shared with you last week, we would not have been able to do all our staff as quickly. But I do want to go to the question about the response on the survey. Now, the data I'm going to share with you is as of this morning. We went ahead and sent the survey out again because we still had too many people who did not respond. I do not have those numbers, but I'm giving you the numbers that I do have. So as of early this morning, just so you know, we have about 6,000 employees when you include substitutes because they are fully, we need our substitutes to be vaccinated, part-time, hourly wages people. So that's, I'm sorry, did I say 6,000? I meant to say 5,000, 5,000 employees, okay. So we had 4,142 responses. 3,521 wanted to get vaccinated. That's an 85%. However, we were still missing close to 1,000 responses. So for the purposes of moving forward, not that these people can't get the vaccine, but they would not be scheduled in this early phase, okay? They could still get it, but as you know, we're in an early tier. I think 1B, something to that effect. So the point really is that we're hopeful that by end of next week or maybe early of the following week, all those that have requested it will be able to get their first dosage. And then depending on which vaccine is given, either 21 or 28 days later. So that's a real positive. I will say, my daughter who teaches up in Fairfax, some Prince William County north of us, they were early. She is getting her first shot Sunday at a hospital up in Fairfax. And what they're doing, and this is the process we're going to use. Everybody has value that you will coordinate with the Mary Washington Hospital. They will give you times and days, and then you pick it, and then you're in the system. You show up, you get your shot, okay? So we're hopeful that approximately 1,000 people that did not respond, that number went down after we sent out the next reminder. So that's really good news. I do want to thank Mary Washington Hospital and the Health Department, who have been really good partners. On another note, and we'll talk more about this at another time, we received yesterday the new CARES Act funding for Stafford. At the end of the day, it'll be about $7 million, which is great. We appreciate that. They did use the formula that we were hoping they would not use, which is Title I. So you go to like a place like Spotsylvania, which is a few thousand less children than we have. They're getting like $10 million, okay? But we'll still know that the money will, the money can be used up to September of 2023. And a good portion of the money from an earlier conversation can be focused on learning loss. So we'll be looking at not only ways for health mitigation, but also for instructional programs to support our students. It's not going to be all games in the summer of '21. So this will be an all-year process to bring our children to the level in which they need to be at. Math seems to be the area that the early research is suggesting where students are falling further behind. That's really all I need to say at this point. Thank you.
Thank you for that update. So next on our agenda are three consent items. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second. Been moved and seconded, all three consent items. Any discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We have one action item tonight. This was brought up, as I stated, at the joint schools meeting of whether the school board wanted to, in light of the discussion about Mary Washington, wanted to modify or change the approved CIP that the school board approved in September. As you can notice, our enrollment and the projections have not gone significantly down. And I think that there was more of a need to know if we wanted to make an immediate change. I think Mary Washington and those discussions may need to be had. But it seemed like there was a, remember, caught up in our budget is our CIP. So if there was any change of direction of the board of our priorities, which are listed right there, is there any thought that we want to make any changes to the immediate CIP for this year? That, as we all say, it's a fluid document. However, for funding decisions coming up, I don't.
Can I add something? Because I was also at the meeting. I think the question from the Board of Supervisors, there was a very real question about, did we want to purchase the Mary Washington complex? And if so, we need to know in terms of other things. And three of us cannot make a decision like that for the rest of everybody else. And so there was sort of a question of, can we, do we want to direct staff to investigate this and come back to us? But I think my impression from what Ms. Hazard is saying is, you know, we don't want to slow up high school number six by, you know, suddenly redoing our CIP at this point. So that's just my.
I appreciate that. Any?
I support keeping it as it is.
I support keeping it as it is. I think that to purchase the Mary Washington property would require some analysis by our staff. We also need to make sure that the schools that we add to our list are viable as far as where our students are. So I feel very comfortable with the CIP proposal that we presented, and I think it should stay as it is.
And we may direct staff as we have further discussions, as we see more numbers rolling in, to explore this. One thing that was stated is when sort of queried, and I'm trying to make sure we don't, whether it was for sale, I kind of got a flip response of, well, anything's for sale. Well, I don't really want to pay any price either. So I think there has to be some further analysis. I believe that there is some utility. I love how we're using that building now. I know we would like to expand, but I think right now, sticking to what we have presented. But I do believe, Dr. Kizner, there is some, at least appetite of the board, to discuss further the possibilities with that building, knowing right now I don't think we can go and kick them out anyway. Madam Chair?
Yes.
So I was also at that joint meeting. And I would preface to say that we should keep it open, keep this as is. Don't change anything here. But we do not know what the future is going to bring. And again, I'm bringing up COVID. But we don't know where we're going to be, and we don't know how much room we're going to be needing, you know, for spacing. So, yeah, we don't want to buy anything right now. But if they want to, you know, look into that and buy it and hold it, that's fine. But for right now, I'm just saying that we, you know, the space that we currently use is good. We could use more of it because we just, like I said, we don't know what's going to happen. But for right now, I too vote to keep it as is.
All right. I don't know if we would like to just go ahead and make a vote because our vote was unanimous last time on where our priorities were. And so if there's a motion just to reaffirm that decision, I think that would be great.
Motion to reaffirm our decision.
Second. All right. Any further discussion? All those in.
I'm just happy that North Stafford is on there. Thank you, Mark.
And so any, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I will send a letter, which I will send to the board, just reaffirming the decision and the action taken this evening. We have two information items. One is about the purchase of the security equipment for six elementary schools. Are there any questions concerning that item? Any questions? All right, any questions?
Yes.
I just have one per question. Jay, the fact that we, I think the last time I asked this question is about how many we're going to be needing in the future. And I think you mentioned something that it's rotating depending on which ones comes up to be changed out. And so for the sake of, like, if we buy it later than sooner, does the cost go up even more? And is it beneficial to?
We have a deadline to have it done by April, so we can get a little started. It certainly wouldn't hurt anything.
Okay, great, great. But if we have any more in the future, should we be looking at it as a whole? And I think Ms. Hazard had brought that up in terms of looking at everything that we need versus piecemealing it. Is that something that?
It's a long-term project, multi-year.
Gotcha.
It's on a cycle.
Gotcha.
Yeah, we're comfortable with our stance, but we do need to keep maintaining it.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Going back to our three R discussion, that we have things that we need to continually update. All right, is it okay for us to wait until the 26th?
Either ways, we can make that work.
All right. Thank you. All right. Our next one is our middle school program of studies and course catalog. Are there any specific questions regarding this item? All right, all right. Well, then, hearing none, we will be meeting our next time. We will be in meeting in two weeks. Remember to bring your calculators. We will be getting Dr. Kizner's budget funding request on the 26th. Place to be determined, we are going to be making sure we can get the best place to meet. Anyway, Happy New Year. Thank you, everybody. Stay safe and well. Meeting is adjourned.